We're back in open session. Item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Superintendent.
Everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One day.
Item 4.2, Broadcast Statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City Unified Stool District is being recorded. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be closed captioned and video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replaced Saturday, November 9th at 7:00 PM and Monday, November 11th at 12:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form, which are located in the back of the room, and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cell phones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you, Ms. June Griffith. Item 4.3, Stellar Student Introduced by Board Member Rhodes. It's all yours, sir.
All right, thank you so much. So can we get all of our stellar students from Burbank up? Round of applause for these students. Okay, and so we have one of our students, Kayla Persad, is not able to come today, or she's not with us right now, but we wanted to recognize her. We also have Adam Vang, Neeti Ranam, Lily Bowie, Conchi Kang. First, we're going to start off with Neeti. Neeti is a senior student in the Law and Social Justice Academy. She is a hard-working student and has dreamed to pursue nursing career after high school. Neeti will be applying to various UC, USC's, and private colleges. Can we get a round of applause for Neeti? Then we have Lily. Lily is a senior at Luther Burbank High School and inspires to become a pediatrician to help bring smiles to children's faces and help them stay healthy. She enjoys doing art, such as drawing and making clay sculptures, singing, and dancing. Could you sing for us today by any chance? I am joking, I'm totally joking. She also is in CAS Club, which is a club that centers on activities with creativity, action, and service. This past summer, she began volunteering at Villant to gain volunteer experience, help out their community, and observe medical workers do the interesting things of medical field. Lily maintains over a 4.0 GPA. And then, Conchi. Is a senior who is delighted and dedicated in both academics and extracurricular activities. Growing up as a child of refugee parents and low-income family, she faced obstacles in financially, in financial stability and lacking academic supports at home. She completed dual enrollment, taking a freshman semester and psychology 300 college courses, earning as in both, earned both and maintained over a 4.0 GPA at Burbank. She plans to pursue a career in mental health therapist to help her community in the future. Round of applause. And lastly, this is from Autumn Vang, and she writes, "I'd like to thank Ms. Siberia for nominating me. I never knew there was such a thing like this before she brought this to my attention. I was chosen as one of five. Now let's begin. I'm always running around school. I participate in the Associate Student Body, ASB, volleyball club, and I play sports. In ASB, I am the finance officer who handles the fundraising and the money. I played volleyball for three years. After high school, I plan to study interior architect design at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo University." Round of applause for Autumn. So, we want to congratulate all of you guys for your hard work and your continued effort at Luther Burbank High School and in our community. We also want to give you an opportunity to say a few words to the community broadly, to the board, and to your families. Floor is yours. No, that was, you don't have to all, also, but if any of you guys do, and if we have any parents who also want to say anything about their students, I also invite you to come up and say a few words before we hear from the board. No, I think, I saw one that was, I saw one that looked, but that's totally fine as well. Before we go today, we, oh, we have one.
Is it on?
Yes.
Like, how do I turn it on?
We can hear you.
Oh, it's on? I just want to say thank you for inviting us over here. It really does feel like a lot, knowing that Burbank is not really a known school. Like, it's a very, in a small town, it's in Sacramento, South Sac, you know? So it's, it's really nice that you guys actually acknowledge us and stuff for our studies. Thank you.
May I, Madam? Thank you. I just want to say congratulations on your hard work.
I just want to get them all together. Can we take a picture of this real quick? Just real quick, I just want you to take a picture of them real quick, of this. I really thought it was cool. That's, that's the only reason we're doing this. Okay, and then you guys can grab these, and then we'll take a picture of all of you guys. Parents, you guys can hop in, we're going to take one big picture. Hop in.
No, 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 you're supposed to, you're supposed to block us.
Come in, come in. I just want to hand you guys. Yeah.
All right, moving on. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session. Madam Counsel.
Good evening, President Phillips. There are three announcements coming out of closed session. First, the board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of six to zero, with member Kayata absent. Second, the board approved a settlement agreement related to OAH case number 2024-070719 and OAH case number 2024-071050, each won separately by a vote of six to zero with member Kayata absent. The superintendent will give the last announcement.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointment. By a vote of six to zero with board member Kayata absent, the board approved the appointment of Mikako Fisher-Hill as Assistant Superintendent of Early Learning and Care.
Item 6.0, Adoption of Agenda. Moved and seconded, I heard that. All in favor? Fantastic. Continuing, item 7.0, Public Comment.
We have about six speakers. We begin with Sonia Correa, followed by Laura Kerr, and then Victor Ward.
So you have two minutes each. The floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Correa. I was a special education teacher at James Marshall, James W. Marshall Elementary School from October 11th, 2023 through February 7th, 2024, at which time, an autistic special education student assaulted me in front of the whole population of intermediate students. I continued to struggle with those injuries and seeking medical attention from the worker's comp doctor. He was sending me back to work, in which I told him I wasn't able to physically or mentally, and because it was becoming adversarial, I stated, "Can I go on the record and state that I'm concerned for my health and safety?" And basically, I continued to have issues and ended up having back surgery. I previously had a back condition with back surgeries, but I was cleared to do the job, and I was physically able to, to do the job. But at this time, I can't do the job, and they have offered no support. They characterize what happened to me as the student moved me from side to side, and I wanted to state, the whole intermediate students certainly would not characterize that as what happened to me. It was traumatic for me, it was traumatic for the students. I have PTSD, and it's just not right. I mean, the student didn't get the help that she needed. From the beginning of the school term, she was assaulting students and staff members. I just don't feel it's right that I've suffered financially. They still haven't supported me with worker's comp, and this is the first step coming before the board, because I think the public needs to be aware that this is happening. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board Members. Laura Kerr, I'm with the Charter School Development Center. I'm here about the SAC Prep charter renewal, which you'll be voting on in later this month. And just wanted to provide a little context about charter law and some of the changes that have happened recently. So SAC Prep is a school that serves about 340 students in the pocket, and as a charter school, charter schools were established to have a different kind of approach within the public education system. So to give parents and families choice, to give teachers the ability to try different things professionally, and importantly, to move away from a rule-based accountability system to an outcome-based, a performance-based accountability system. Charter renewal is part of that, and in 2018, the law changed again, and the state lays out what charter renewal looks like. And it's, it's important, because then the relationship between a charter school and a school district, there's a real, there's a power imbalance, right? There's a giant school district and a little 300-student school. SAC Prep is an exceptional school, though. In 2008, the Charter Schools Act was changed, where the Department of Education now tracks every charter into a performance category leading up to charter renewal. There's a high track, there's a middle track, there's a low track. As you can imagine, most charter schools fell into the middle track. There's some that are in the low track, and there's some that are in the high track. SAC Prep is in the high track. It is a gem. It's, it shows that, based on its student academic achievement and its outcomes, they're closing the gap for students, they're serving subgroups well, and they're, they're doing great things for kids. As you consider charter renewal, I think it's important that we don't miss the forest for the trees, that we focus on those outcomes, and while we can continue to have conversations about oversight and what that looks like, the school has definitely earned renewal. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. Floor is all yours.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Allen, members of the community. My name is Victor Ward. I'm here to talk about my company Competes EDU and Proposition 28, which, as you know, guarantees 1% of the school's budget to go to the expansion of the arts program. That was passed in 2022. In 2019, the California Department of Education expanded their four core arts, from music, dance, visual arts, and theatrical arts, to include a fourth, which is media arts. This is the definition of media arts. Media arts is a dynamic, evolving discipline that integrates creativity, technology, and critical analysis, equipping students with the skills they will need to thrive in today's and tomorrow's media-saturated world. Now, we all know that a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, the governor banned smartphones on school grounds. And I used to teach, so when I taught, there were no smartphones. There were just dumb phones. And even then, you didn't want a phone in the classroom. So I fully get what the governor is trying to do, but I dare say that it's a little bit misplaced. He is looking at the cellphone and that technology as a toy, and trying to prevent the toy from invading the educational landscape. Media arts looks at the educational landscape invading the technology, invading the phone, and that's what my company is all about. So we have created a platform, think something like TikTok, but a whole lot better. It's only for students, it's only for schools, it's only for school districts. I can't post on it, it's, I'm part of the company, but I can't post. It's only for schools and students. It's, it's standards-based, that's to help me to sell that to the educators, but it's fun-based, and that's why the students want to, who wants to use it. So I'm hoping to sit through this wonderful meeting, and maybe at the end, I'll be able to hand this to you, Superintendent Allen, and then you can point me in the right direction to who to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next group of speakers, we have Norman Hernandez, followed by Jackie Hay and Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Lisa Allen, nice to meet you. Keep this brief, and I'll try not to wander this time, so thank you for allowing me to speak. If you recall, on October 24th, board meeting, I was here for a renewal hearing, and as you are well aware, our vote is on the 21st of this month. And if you haven't checked your email today, please do, because I have sent you all an email earlier with an attachment as well in regards to my public comments this evening. So I thank you in advance for taking a second if you have not read it, or if you have, thank you. But as you may know, SAC Prep is in the high-performing track when it comes to renewals, and high-track schools only have two specific requirements it must meet for its petition to be renewed, requirements the district staff has cited in their communications with us. While we look forward to continuing our collaboration with staff and provide them some additional information per their request, we also want to ensure the board receives the responses and updates from SAC Prep, in addition to the findings provided by the district. Ensure we disagree with the findings. I included our letter that we have sent to the staff on Monday. I sent all of you, again, I sent it earlier today. In addition, we will have more, a more complete response to the findings, which I will also share with you and staff as well, and any parties involved. And it's really it. I'm going to keep it short. I thank you for your time, I thank you for allowing me to listen. Sorry. It's the kiddo. But I do appreciate your, your time, and I look forward to speaking with you, and I do encourage, again, all of you, that when you do have the time in your busy, busy schedules, please come and visit our campus. It is an open door. Thank you.
Thank you much. Floor is yours.
So, good evening. My name is Jackie Haig, and I'm here to talk about my experience not as a SAC City Unified student. I'm actually a new resident of Sacramento. I just moved here a year and a half ago for law school, and in that time, I've taken a public education class, and I've learned a lot, and I've learned a lot about the differences from what I experienced in high school versus what I believe your students experience. Thank you to Professor Collins for teaching me so much. And I think the most important and key difference that I've realized and learned about is that, as I understand it, Sacramento students have to take an ethnic studies class to graduate. And I think that's a great thing. I think that is something that could have impacted me a lot in high school, getting to see myself represented in classes, as well as see my fellow classmates represented. Coming from Clark County, which is in Las Vegas, where I'm from, we see, have seen a big rise in incidents involving racial disparities, particularly among middle school and elementary school students. And I think that education starts at a young age, I think it's important at a young age, and I propose that education starting even younger, beyond high school, would be an important idea. Just in Clark County, they've seen a rise of racial slurs from student to student as young as fourth grade, at 10 years old. And it's important to me to keep appraised of that, because my own brother still attends that school district, and at 13, he tells me that that's nothing new. So I know that it's different here. You guys have implemented a lot of things that I didn't get to experience, but I propose that even younger is a good starting point, because we're seeing these issues even younger. And again, I know it's not the same district, but I don't think there's much of a difference between kids between two states. So that's what I wanted to bring to the table. I wanted to say good job, and I, from what I've seen in the research I've done, it seems that SAC City Unified is doing a lot better than Clark County School District is, and I wish I would have gotten the chance to attend here. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Professor Collins, and good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Gladney, the floor is yours, sir.
Hey, how are you guys doing? Good evening. My name is Terrence Gladney. I am the founder and director of the Terrell Christopher Gladney, also known as TCG Academy. I've come before you before, just highlighting that we are the Sacramento region partner for the Scripps National Spelling Bee. I propose that at a district level, we invest in our children through this very affordable program, but with no current response to date, I'm making a plea to you guys as trustees, as you guys all have eligible schools in your trustee areas, and for the cost of $200 per school, you can open up opportunities for your scholars to take the voyage to Washington, DC and represent our great school district. Last year, I did have the honor to travel to DC to National Spelling Bee, and it was an international experience. There were six Ghanaian spellers from, from the country of Ghana who were representing their country, and our local speller made it again to, to the semifinals and was 22nd out of 250-plus spellers. There's no reason that we should not have the opportunity to have one of our SAC City students represent us. This year, we've decided to invest a little bit further and sponsor two spellers, and beyond you guys, I'm asking our instructional area superintendents to reach out to their eligible schools, which include all elementary schools and middle schools, because a student can be up to eighth grade and 14 years or younger. For the cost of $200 per school, we can allow every scholar at that school the opportunity to have hope to participate in this great opportunity, but what it also comes with is literacy-based resources for every classroom, right? So how a school decides to carry out their B at the school level could be selecting a single student, or it could be a set of multiple classroom spelling Bs that then lead to a school B. But, you know, I'm just interested in providing the opportunity for, for scholars, and if there are parents watching, if there are community members watching, PTA leaders, you know, I will work with you directly to support the B and to, you know, carry out the B at your school. I just want the opportunity for more of our scholars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next group of speakers, Eliah Bassin with Rena and Arlo.
It's all yours.
Thank you. My children had a busy day, so they're going to give their time allotment to myself for speaking on behalf of their school. My name is Eliah Bassin. I'm a parent who has been witnessing enrollment barriers and concaping in discriminatory manners. I've been coming now for 13 months. I've been working on this with your district. I really thank you all for your time. As I said the last meeting, I don't think it's impossible for you, on a volunteer basis, to be trying to address the issues that this district has, and I'm sorry, I'm taking your volunteering time on this, and sorry for all of our time that we're here now. Open enrollment is fast approaching. I haven't heard of any changes in the discriminatory practices. I've tried to be quiet, polite, begging, following due process. I'm trying not to make this public or embarrassing, because I want to support our district the best we can, but I'm now to the point where I think public embarrassment and making a bigger scene is the only way forward, without otherwise costing us more student legal fees and legal settlement costs, which is not what I want to do either. Here's a map. Last time, in the spring, I spent well over $100 giving you guys all flyers and printed colored copies and posters. I'm just making it simple to make the point. Here's the rivers, there's our capital. These areas had discriminatory housing policies from the 40s through the 60s at least, I don't know when they ended. In this exact same area of discrimination is the exact same area where we have discriminatory enrollment barriers to our kindergartners that are not supported in the state law. In short, the wider the schools are, the more enrollment barriers there are, and longer that they've been in place. The way the district, at our district, at our school Tahoe, our youngest grades are now above average in their whiteness, and all of a sudden, out of the blue, the district is holding many open seats and not allowing any more open enrollment into our school, which just seems to correlate with all other schools that have wider schools and don't allow open enrollment. The way the district has communicated with me in this past year, I dare say is the way I hear fascist governments working, and the way that they are refusing follow their own policies. It feels to me like the principals and the higher staff are using the district like a blank check. They are just, they have no repercussions for being discriminatory. The district just keeps paying and paying out of it, but no one here is having any personal harm from it, not you personally. I'm going to share some of the, I could talk for a long time about these embarrassing stories, but one, the biggest one, I learned a dirty secret for the district and the state that there's a required public complaint process, a uniform complaint. But I learned if the district decides to just ignore your uniform complaint and not investigate it, for example, there's a principal who's popular, and that principal has an allegation of discrimination, the district can just not do anything and just sit on that, despite many emails to the state, and the state says, "I can only appeal a decision." The district didn't make a decision, even though the district's not following their own policy. Their own policy is to do an investigation within 60 days, and the district is at nine months since that specific investigation, and many, many emails, and they can just do nothing, and, and they're going back to the blank check. They're depending on us to find a lawyer and file a lawsuit and cost everyone, the students, more money. And that's just one of, a lot more stories. They have straight up lied on the PRAs. Once I was clear that I was advocating for discrimination complaints, you know, my first PRAs were immediately responded to, like I've had, you know, I'm 42 now, I've had many experiences with different public agencies. PRAs have been processed in a normal manner. Here, once I felt like I was being retaliated against for bringing up concerns at some of these whitest schools, they just lie on the PRAs, and they're making ridiculous complaints like you're not allowed to see someone's email, period, even if it's regarding something specific, like they just don't respond to things. And they've given me different data than they've given And they've given me different data than they've given the board members. I don't think they're even telling you guys what is happening. They lied about concapping happening this year. What they promised some of the people who were advocating against the concapping changes, they made promises and those did not happen. Back to the concapping issue, I made this point nine, 10 months ago, but I'm really advocating, this is my last point. I've been listening to the board for many years now, before some of you were members, and a common complaint is our elementary schools are tiny and that's a problem with our budgets. And I, not my idea talking to professionals, I'm calling it the sister school method, there's another word. Speaking for my own area, Tahoe Elementary and Mark Twain, we already got all our concapping anyways. Instead of making kids have to change classes halfway through the year, we can combine the two schools. One can be K through third, one can be third through sixth. We can have more than one class per grade and we can hopefully have more resources when we have more than one class per grade and hopefully reduce concapping problems that we have district-wide. Again, I thank you for your time and I'm going to keep coming back through this open enrollment process because I can send you guys 100 pages and many details on the problems that have happened this year, learning about open enrollment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Wilson. She has several cards for a total of 10 minutes.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I'm back again. Well, I come here about Rosemont High School. There is a lot of things that are going on still and there's one person that is not being brought in with the other people that are going through it. Let me explain, okay. My granddaughter goes to Rosemont High School and I want to see Mr. Gibbs, I guess they call him Dr. Gibbs, but I want to see Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Jones removed and put somebody in there that's going to support these children. Somebody that is going to be there and not pull them down. I took my granddaughter to the psychiatrist again because she is having a lot of problems dealing with this. It's too much. I'm not here for just my granddaughter. I'm here for all the kids that go to Rosemont. I'm granny and I'm there for them. They can't fight for themselves and then you have people to come in and say they're gonna do this and they don't do anything like the man that you put me in front of the last time I was here. Nothing has he done. You call him and he's supporting this and it's not fair. It's uncalled for and you can't keep doing these kids like that. If you want to get respect from them, you have to give them respect. Nobody is just here just because they have to, I mean, they want to be there, they have to go. They have to get their education to go forward. But you keep putting them down, calling them names, talking about them, tell them that if they don't do this or do that, then, there's recordings, but I can't, they won't allow me to play them. But there's recordings from this man and if you want me to replay them for you separately, I will do that, but this don't make any sense. I don't understand. Somebody needs to explain to me why this man is allowed to do what he's doing to these children. Somebody needs to explain it. I know, I'm standing here, right, but I, I'm here because I care. If I didn't care about what happened to the kids, I wouldn't be here. And like I said, it's not all about just mine, it's about all the kids there and the teachers that are having a hard time with him also. And then he brought, he had all this going badly. We had a meeting on Friday, at, last Friday at the school, and it was for the cheer parents. So, we're at the meeting, but the person that start all the red, you know, brought up all this never was in the meeting. He didn't come. He puts Mr. Jones, who the other doesn't have a backbone, Mr. Jones and Mr. Gosny there and they ran the meeting, but they didn't know what was going on. Gosny didn't, but Jones did. Nobody is doing, I mean, I know it takes time and things and I'm not trying to be impatient, but with him, there's something that has to be done with Mr. Gibbs. Go ahead, baby. This is my granddaughter. Go ahead.
My name is Amelia Valentine. I go to Rosemont High and I'm one of a handful of students that have witnessed or went through the, like, things happening with Dr. Gibbs and Jones and it's mostly like, basically cheer. It's our sport and at first, they told us we weren't even a sport, that we were just a club. We couldn't do a lot of things sophomore year. Now this school year, it's a lot of things with uneligibility. Personally, I had asked Dr. Gibbs, I knew I wasn't eligible to cheer, so I had asked him, is there anything that I could do? Because I already found out I made the team. So, I asked, is there anything that I can do to, you know, cheer or else I'll get my spot up? He said, go to summer school and that'll fix it, your GPA and you can cheer. I did that all of summer school, paid for my own gear and everything. Then, the night before school started, he said that I couldn't cheer. So, I felt a type of way because he had said that there was no physical evidence of him saying that so that it doesn't even count and summer school does not count. But then, another student, he said, it does count and let them do their sport, which was football. And it's just a lot of things like that. And then, so, to keep high spirits, some of the girls were ineligible, we wore our uniforms. And after we wore our uniforms, they had put us in the office and said that we weren't allowed to because they didn't like it. I had asked, where does it say that in a rulebook that if you're ineligible, you can't still wear your uniform? They said, well, it's not in the rulebook, but we don't like it. And since we don't like it now, for the whole semester, you guys cannot cheer or do anything because they had said quarter grades, they'll check and let us do our sport because it's proof of progress. But then they said, since you're doing something that we don't like, now y'all can't do anything at all. So, it's like, a lot of things like that. And then when we tell our parents about it, they say, well, it's not in writing, it's not in an email, it's not in anything, so that never happened. And it's just a lot of things like that. But it's like, not just, they don't do that to everybody. It's a handful. One student can, you know, do summer school and be able to do their sport and it counts. But then when it comes to one student, maybe they don't like or something, then it's, oh, it doesn't count because I never told you that, there's no proof of it. And it's a lot of things like that and it, to a point, it feels like, you know, favoritism. But then, when we stand up for what we, for ourselves and our peers, they retaliate. They retaliated against me because I had stood up for myself and my peers and my teammates and they took homecoming away from me, they took cheer for the rest of the season from me, they took a lot of things, they just kept taking and taking and taking. And all I was doing was, I wasn't hollering, shouting, retaliating, I was just asking them, like, why am I being treated like this? But I see my peers allowed to do things that I'm not allowed to do and I'm doing the things that you're telling me to do. And it's just retaliation, retaliation, like, they just keep taking and taking and taking. And it should be noticed highly. It's just, you know, like, it's hard to explain, you know? I'm young and I'm just trying to have fun, it's my junior year and some girls that, they're doing this to our seniors, so like, a lot of girls like, are going through a lot because it's their senior year and they're getting treated like this because they dislike, and I don't have proof of this, but on multiple occasions, it's Dr. Gibbs' comments about, oh, I dislike cheer, like, there's not going to be no cheer at all next year because I just don't like y'all, I don't like y'all. And it's like, it should, we shouldn't be treated this way because you dislike, personally dislike a sport or you dislike certain people. You're, this is your career, your job, you're supposed to be professional and follow rules and not go based off of who you like and who you dislike and who gets privileges and who doesn't. And out of his own mouth, he said, you're not doing what I like, so I'm, you're not going to get special privileges from me. Students shouldn't get special privileges because you like them. That's not how, that's not how your career should be ran. So, yeah. Oh, I think I'm done. Sorry.
Okay. We had, we have 2 minutes 16 seconds left roughly. You can let me know if you are done with yours and we can stop the clock or...
Yeah, I think I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Final speaker is Michael Pritchett. He has one extra card for a total of four minutes. I apologize, I didn't see that. Yep, 9.1, he's correct. So, we are done with public comment.
Sorry, item 8.0, communications, 8.1. I'm naming them. When I call you, I want you to pop up. I see Ms. Myleski's already come in, so I'm gonna say SC TA. First up. I wasn't gonna make you run. You're okay.
Good evening, members of the board. Board President Phillips and Superintendent Allen. It's been a significant week in so many areas. Honestly, I can't believe it's only Thursday. First, we'd like to say congratulations to SEIU and the district for reaching TA this week. With the resolution of that dispute, we hope that the focus can be turned to solving systemic problems and recruiting and retaining the classified staff our students so desperately need. We, the teachers, we actually met with our bargaining team last night to talk about, and well, we will be asking your team to meet as soon as possible. We were talking about our proposal to use the agreed-upon funds that we've recouped from the state penalty and how to use those funds to support our students. And we hope that things can move really quickly in that area and we can come to an agreement. Before Tuesday, I had thought with our local school board and the bond measure elections almost complete, that we could breathe a little easier. But unfortunately, with the developments at the federal level, we must acknowledge that many of our students, families and colleagues are very stressed and deeply concerned about their future. We must work together as a school community to find support and resources to get through this uncertain time and we have a lot of work ahead of us to continue to provide a safe environment for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 8.2, district advisory committees. First up, student advisory council. All yours.
The student advisory council has been in continuous collaboration with facilities and LGBTQ+ support services in the past few months to follow up on the gender-neutral initiative and resolution that was passed last year. We will be sending out a survey soon to different school sites to get an understanding of how the initiative has like gone into effect at their school sites and how they feel about their gender-neutral restrooms. We've also begun meetings for the student mental wellness committee. Currently, it's just comprised of student advisory council members. However, we're soon going to start recruiting other high school students from other school sites. And finally, we have begun deciding and working on new initiatives for this school year. Some major areas that we are interested in focusing on and developing ideas for right now are substance abuse, student discipline and food and nutrition. And I'm looking forward to hopefully having more of you come to our meetings and see the work we're doing on that there.
Thank you, Ms. Chu Griffith. Next up, community advisory committee, CAC. D-LAC, district English learner advisory committee. LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan Parent Advisory Committee. Floor is yours.
Obviously, I'm an LCAP PAC member. We had a meeting here Monday night. We did not have the opportunity to have a conversation about who would make an official statement. So, out of respect for us being a committee and I don't have, you know, the authority of my committee to do so, I would maybe ask Ms. Jean if there's anything that you would like to offer since you were in attendance and thank you for you and Board Member Mikaela's attendance, but I would think it would probably be more appropriate for someone other than myself to maybe just speak to the meeting. Okay. Okay. So, I, I mean, I guess then, having spoken to some of my other committee members, our hope is that we dive a little bit deeper into our being able to offer comments directly to the superintendent for review and having more space to have authentic conversations in the space because it hasn't happened, but also leaning on the past achievements and work within the space to inform our future and work a little bit more efficiently and represent you guys and our community a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. You're just gonna stay up there?
Yeah, I can walk in a circle around the board.
Black African-American Advisory Board. Mr. Gladney, floor is yours.
Today in Black education history, on November 7th, 1876, Edward A. Boucher became the first African-American to graduate with a doctoral degree from any institution. And it was from Yale, it was a degree in physics. And at the time, he was the only, only the sixth person in the United States to graduate with a doctoral degree. It took like 42 years before another African-American graduated with a degree in physics, doctoral degree, because there was a shift in focus to vocational education over academic education. As the Black African-American Advisory Board, it's important that we do what we can to inform our spaces with the work and contributions of African-Americans because we cannot wait for this system that does not do so to do so. While we acknowledge the work of the curriculum and instruction department to start at the top level of our system and work on an AP course because it's an easier path, we know that we have to establish a culture of awareness of self before those kids get to the opportunity to apply and participate in an African-American AP course. We had our meeting here last night, our general body meeting, and, you know, Danny Rulary was in attendance as our liaison. Our focus right now is to acknowledge that in 2019, the Board of Education committed to recommendations to improve the outcomes for Black students. Now, we've seen pieces of them exist in many pockets of the system, including the current work plan around a lawsuit that was filed. But the strategies that were developed back in 2019 were the collective work of people that really represented a great cross-section of this community, very outstanding leaders. We're seeking to have you guys as a board reaffirm your commitment to this body since it was accepted under previous superintendent and we're looking to Dr. Allen to reaffirm your commitment to us under your leadership and help us establish a vision as to how we're supposed to carry this work forward and how you guys collectively and how we collectively will accelerate the implementation of these recommendations. I don't know that you guys all have a copy of them, but we will gladly share them with you guys, including the current implementation status and reflecting obviously back to May and June of this year. The path is easy and what I reflected on in our meeting last night is this, you know, I coach track and field and you get kids that come from all aspects of life, some have a history of running, some don't. When I used to do a 5K with the kids at Cabrillo and we did running club through Project Fit, a lot of times, the kids just looked at the daunting distance of 5K, right, 3.2 miles. The only way I was able to get them to complete it was to get them to acknowledge that as long as we stand still, we're not making any headway or progress towards that distance. So, I'd get them to take a step and then with every step, they got closer to the target and then we're able to achieve the goal of the 3.2 miles. We have to stop standing still, we have to start taking steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next group, community schools advisory committee and American Indian Education Program Parent Floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Totti. I am Cherokee Navajo Intewa, a freshman at Rosemont High School and the newly appointed student representative for the American Indian Education Program Parent Advisory Committee. I am also a student ambassador for the Native Youth of Sacramento. Before I begin my update, I would like to take a moment to recognize that it is Native American Heritage Month. When it comes to Native American Heritage Month and the celebration of Native culture, I often think about the responsibilities of being Native and what it means to be Native. But as I consider this time of year and the associated hype around Native Americans, what comes to my mind is not the responsibilities of us Native people, but the responsibilities of others to consider Native people more. There is a responsibility to go beyond the status quo, lack of education provided in our country to... our country today. There is a responsibility to learn about authentic Native history, contemporary Native issues and people. Tonight, I challenge the school board to collaborate on how we can meet these responsibilities and make Native American Heritage Month something of substance and more than just an art project for kids in school. Now on to business. Through my ambassador program, I went on a college campus visit to Casamneze River College. When we first got there, we took a tour of the campus, and while doing that, we also visited a few programs for students there and sat in on some of the classes they offered. Finally, we visited the Support Center for Native Students where they gave us information on the support they offer, and the staff also talked about their experiences as Native students attending college. I found this information very educational and informative for when I'm ready to attend college. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on, item 9.0, 9.1, recognition of outgoing board members. Sorry. Okay. People come and people go. I'm not gonna ad lib this. We have two board members who are exiting this evening. Did we have a slideshow or any special anything? Okay. I wanted to see movies and really cool things about what you guys did, but we know you guys have done a great deal in your areas and on this board. We have worked through some things. We know we will still have things to work through because this is a very dynamic, a dynamic unit that we have here as a board. So I'm gonna call the first person, and I see like significant others out there. So I see Poppy sitting out there, Mr. Pritchett. So what we do is we award our outgoing board members with these beautiful apples. I don't have mine yet because I'm not leaving yet, but this is, the first one I want to present to is Christina Pritchett, and she is the former president of the school board. I'm not sure if we're gonna take pictures or anything like that, but I just wanna see if any of my colleagues, before I present you with this fantastic fruit here, if anybody wants to share anything about Ms. Pritchett, who's been on the board forever. And I think I want to let you speak first before we say anything. So in exiting, I will allow you to have the mic, ma'am. Go for it.
Thank you. In preparation for this meeting, I spent a lot of time reflecting on this incredible journey. When I first stepped into this role, I knew that it would be demanding, but I also knew that it would be a privilege, one that I would pour my heart and soul into to advocate for the children and families of our community. My journey began when I joined the PTA and served as president for several years. Back then, my children were really young, and I had a lot more energy to invest into their education and into our school communities. Looking back, those were the formative years for me. I'm deeply grateful to all of the district staff that I've worked with for creating opportunities like the Parent Leadership Academy, which has allowed so many of us to engage, learn, and grow as advocates. It was through that very program and driven by my own personal experience of a lack of compassion towards my own child that I knew that I needed to do more. It was that moment that inspired me to run for this position and dedicate myself to serving the community even further. So reflecting on the last 12 years, 12 years, that's a long time, I'm filled with gratitude for the progress that we've made and the incredible partnerships that we've made to make this work possible. Our journey has been one of growth, resilience, and an unwavering commitment to improving the lives of every student in this district. Together, we've achieved so much from raising graduation rates and creating more pathways for student success, like the Engineering, Construction, and Design Academy at Rosemont High School. It's programs like this that made me proud to be a board member. So through all of this, I've had the privilege of working alongside so many passionate and talented individuals from district staff, teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders. Each one of you sharing my commitment to our children's future. The work that we've done together is a direct result of your dedication, your support, and your belief in the vision that we've all worked towards. Those people have left a lasting impression on me, and I'll never forget it. But to be honest with you, this position comes with great sacrifice. There are late nights, there are hard decisions, and moments where you might gain friends or lose them. Sometimes you might even find yourself being the unpopular one in the room. But I've kept quiet on many of my positions and how it can affect your family. As a child of a board member, my own daughter Amber was subjected to unwarranted and hurtful treatment. She was publicly ridiculed in the halls of her school with cruel comments such as, "Here comes the board member's princess," and was once grabbed by her arm and was swung around by a staff member in front of her peers and was demanded to know, "What was your mother thinking?" So in addition, my daughter endured emotional distress as a result of inappropriate behavior from staff members, and one of her teachers used class time providing lectures for nearly 45 minutes on Fridays after our meetings on how the school board sucks. So as her parent, I was, my husband and I were devastated by these behaviors. Every child deserves to feel safe, respected, and valued, even ours that sit on this board. By mentioning this, it is my hope that it will never happen to one of your children. I know that there are, and I just want to also mention that there are some amazing teachers who have been my kids' school mom and dads. They're not, they're not all bad stories, right? So I know that there are some who have disagreed with me along the way and some who have misconstrued my words. I've been labeled unfairly by some, along with other past board members, as call it villains. But I ask you to remember where this journey begins. Remember the chapter where you helped shape me, and I'll never change based on somebody's opinion of me. I will always stand firm in my beliefs grounded in my commitment of what's best for our students and for our children. While I'm incredibly proud of what we have achieved on this board, I'm also deeply aware that this work is never truly done. Too often, the conversation gets sidetracked by adult issues, but we cannot lose sight of what matters most, our students. So to my husband, my children who I know are watching, my family and my close friends, thank you for being my unwavering source of strength and encouragement. You stood by me through every challenge, and your love and support have been the bedrock of everything that I've been able to accomplish. I know that I wouldn't be here without any of you, and I'm forever grateful of the sacrifices and for always reminding me of why this work matters, because the future of our children is worth every ounce of effort and sacrifices that we can give. So with that, those that know me know that I'm a big Disney fan. So I will end with a quote from Mr. Walt Disney himself. "Goodbye may seem forever; farewell is like the end; but in my heart, it's the memory, and there you will always be." Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. I'm gonna give you your apple in just a minute. We're gonna let you take a moment. Ms. Villa is next up. Let's do it.
Okay. Community colleagues and family and friends watching from home, as my four-year term on the SCUSD school board comes to an end, I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for the support I've experienced during my term. It has been a privilege to work alongside such dedicated teachers, staff, administration, community members, and of course, our fearless superintendent Lisa Allen. I ran for this position because I wanted to make a difference in the lives of students in District 4 and collectively in the district. Together, we've conquered so much in enhancing educational opportunities for all students. We've advocated for improvements of our schools, supported art-ish initiatives, which included the passing of Prop 28, worked to get a new track at Elder Creek Elementary, new library books at Earl Warren Elementary, a skateboarding program at Willsey Wood, provided funding to assist with fingerprinting and other volunteer initiatives at West Campus, updating school gardens, and so much more. While we are not perfect, I am proud of the thousands of people in our district who work tirelessly every day to make a difference. I did my best to foster a supportive and safe environment for all of our students, families, and educators. This doesn't even include the going through the trials of COVID and working to get our scholars and staff back to safe, back to school safe and on track. I am proud of what we've accomplished. Similar to Christina, there have been people who have disagreed with my decisions. I value your voices. Constructive criticism has pushed me to think more deeply about our goals and the needs of our students. While you may have disagreed with certain decisions, I always put students first. I have thought about whether I should share my entire experience the last four years, and I decided if I didn't, that wouldn't mirror my values of who I am. Those tough and collective board decisions led to extreme retaliations against me and my family. And I want to speak my truth for the board members who came before me, who are sitting here today, and those that will come after me and may experience the same unfortunate situations, but I truly hope not. I've had to navigate around ridiculous egos, defending myself from bullies in person and online, facing harassment on my own home, on my own front porch, having folks call me incredibly offensive and obscene names in front of my young daughter. The list could go on, but you get the point. This is not okay, and I hope those that have led that campaign of bad behavior will put an immediate end to it because the community is watching and our kids are watching. Do better. Thank you, Sacramento, and especially District 4 for entrusting me with this role. A huge thank you to my family and friends who have been there since day one, the ones that have campaigned for me, the ones that have checked in on me, the ones who offered guidance, opposing perspectives, and support. To my husband and my daughter, your support has meant everything to me, and I love you guys more than anything, but we did this together. I look forward to seeing how our students continue to grow and thrive in this district. And while I may not be on this dais after tonight, I will always be a part of this SCUSD family. It has been my great honor, District 4.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, someone's in charge of pictures, but, oh, do we have any public comments? I'm not trying to rush y'all out of here.
We do. We have one speaker, Michael Pritchett, for four minutes.
Mr. P., it's all yours, sir.
Hi. It's the first time up here at this podium. Definitely not the first time in a microphone here at SCUSD. Announcer at the football field for seven years at the high school, did three years of basketball, and many other things here. For those that don't know me, my name is Michael Pritchett. I am the husband of the board member Christina Pritchett, father of graduates of SCUSD here, and was a volunteer for this district for over 20 years. As a spouse of a board member, I'd like to acknowledge all of the silent spouses and family members of board members, both past and present. As spouses, we are frequently the first to listen to the concerns and frustrations that arise. We hear one-sided conversations, attend or watch board meetings, and remain quiet in the background during public events. We celebrate our partners' successes, provide comfort during the challenging times, and share in their frustrations. Like any spouse, we have our own opinions and sometimes disagree with our partners. There are also times where we do agree with them. However, as a spouse, you quickly learn to remain silent, never voicing your own opinions, thoughts, or ideas in public, knowing that any public statement we make is often attributed to the board member we are married to. It can also be frustrating and disheartening when false claims or accusations are made against our elected partners. Sometimes, they are accused of saying things that they have never said or doing things that they never did. At other times, others may take credit for the hard work that our spouses have done, work that is often comes at the expense of family time, such as developing new programs for students or the reopening of closed schools. I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the many teachers, principals, union members, and individual supporters of my wife. Christina and I deeply appreciate your ongoing support, guidance, and respectful discussions, even when you may have disagreed with her positions. Thank you for your time.
President Phillips, we also have Cam Villa signed up to speak.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Cam Villa, and I am the husband of Jamie Villa. Jamie, you showed up for the kids, and you showed up for your community. You did what you said you were going to do. We talked about what real leadership looked like before you ran for the position, and you proved time and time again that you were the right person for the job. I want to thank the parents and the students and the administration, the staff, and the community who supported my wife. It was sometimes lonely out here for you, Jamie, and you found a way to make a difference. People don't know about your own struggles growing up with young parents and not having the means to continue your own education. You never talked about that, and you never led with it. You changed your community for the better, and you worked directly for gun safety, art initiative, wide-open walls. You supported Women's History Month, and you're a project lifelong supporter who helped bring a skateboarding program to Willsey Wood, all while being a room, parent, and school volunteer. Do you remember when SCTA leadership picketed our porch, our very own porch? Do you remember when they posted our home address so people could harass you? It did not work. Do you remember when SCTA leadership told their members to call you after 8:00 PM as many times as they could? It did not work. I hope everyone can see the lengths that SCTA leadership has gone to harass an elected volunteer of our community, a volunteer. As your husband and your partner, you've made our family so proud, and you represented our community and made this a full-time job. I want to thank you for everything that you've done. I love you very much. Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues want to share anything? Mr. Pritchett?
Member Villa, I just want to say how lucky your community was to have you serving as their board member. You have stood against so much, fighting for them. You've been my confidant and my friend, and I know that we will continue being friends after. after this, and we won't have to be here on Thursdays anymore, now we can go have dinner. But thank you for all of the work that you've done.
Ms. Villa?
Remember how we used to always say, I echo that statement? You were one of the first board members that I spoke to when I was running, and we sat on the phone for so long, and we just hit it off and knew that this was going to be a good relationship, and I could learn so much from you. Twelve years on the board, and I got four with you. And you just, you enlightened me to so many things, you gave me tips, you gave me so much insight knowledge that I would, coming in during COVID, when we were on Zoom, I didn't know all of the things that I really should have known. And so I thank you so much for everything that you've done for your area, and for the school board, and for the city as a whole. You should be incredibly proud of the 12 years that you served. Thank you for everything.
Mr. Rhodes?
I'll keep mine brief. So for Christina, 12 years is a long time, and I would say, even for you, Jamie, coming in during COVID, you at least have a good six years in reality. This was a hard road, and we all faced it together, and through the ups and downs, we've made it to a position to where the district is stronger for it. And so I appreciate you guys' service, and to your husband, and both of your husbands out there, what are you guys, the first, first men of the districts, of the areas? We appreciate you guys for your work as well and the support. The spouses are unsung heroes in all of this. And you spoke to us today, Mr. Pritchett, and very beautifully you spoke it, and then that's the reality, is we never come up here solo, we have a lot of people behind us, but it's our spouses that are our anchors, and so without it, it's impossible. So thank you guys, and thank you guys.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I too will be brief. However, anyone that will give of themselves as a public servant is incredibly special. Not everyone can do that and do it well, and take sometimes the scrutiny that comes with being a public servant. And I just want to say thank you. 12 years in SAC City is like double. As a board member, I don't think people understand the amount of time and work and research and phone calls that they have to hear from me. As deputy superintendent, I called them, and now as superintendent, I've called them. And I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done for our students, for our schools, and for our community at large. Member Pritchett, I appreciate your vulnerability, your tenacity at times, and just the love and care that you had for the community, regardless of things that were going on. I appreciate you, and I appreciate when you would just call me and say, hey, I'm just checking in, just seeing how you're doing. That goes a long way, and I appreciate that. It usually was times when I'm driving home late and, you know, just tired, and I just appreciate that. Member Villa, yeah. Member Villa and I had a very unique relationship because she would call me and would have questions. And she and I sometimes would have real conversations, yes? And she would have her thoughts, and I would have my thoughts, and we would usually come to an agreement. And I appreciate your voice on this board, and I appreciate your service to the community. It matters, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and I just appreciate it because this work is difficult as a volunteer, and I know the amount of hours that it takes to be, I think I know, a board member. And so I just want to tell you thank you for, from the community and from staff, we
Mr. Singh?
Following after a superintendent is never fun, so I could say everything that she said, but I remember when I, when I got elected, I think it was right when I got elected, I got a call from Christina. It was like, literally like five seconds after, like, hey, I'm the president, and we should talk. And I think there's a lot of work that goes on at the district level, and folks often want to talk about what doesn't get done, but I think in the two years that I've been here, there's a lot that we have gotten done, and I appreciate the difficult conversations with both of you because it's easy to say that we don't agree on things, but often times I've found us agreeing on a lot of things. And we fail to, as human beings, especially in this world, fail to recognize the stuff that we agree on and focus on the things that we don't. So I can't imagine what 12 years feels like, and we'll see if I have the same conversation in eight years, if that's what, if that's what's written for me. Member Villa, I will probably get emails from you because your kids go to schools in our area, so I, I really hope that you continue to be an advocate, and I know that you will. And I respond to everyone's emails, so I will respond to yours as well. And I look forward to working with you outside of the district and seeing what type of improvements you want to see for our kids, because I don't think that's going to change. And you know Measure H is gonna, or Measure D is gonna pass, so that means we're gonna get a new middle school someday. And, you know, your students, your children are there, and I think building schools for the next generation of kids who live in our neighborhoods is going to be really exciting, and I hope that we have a moment where kids can think about what they want to do, and I hope your kids are able to be a part of that conversation on what they want to see for the next generation of children and their neighbors and their friends. So I'm excited to see what you have in store, and I'm excited for those emails, and you have my phone number, so thank you.
Any other colleagues? I wait because sometimes there's a delay in the button hitting, so I will present you guys with your apples. These apples don't mean as much as the job that you have done, and I know y'all have come up against it. So in no way do I discount what you guys have done, and y'all know, if you, if you really think about it, and I guess, you know, I'm the queen of candid here, but it's like, we should not even be speaking together in the supermarket or if we pass each other, but that's not how we operate here. So no matter what we have on the outside, we all are very focused on improving what we need to improve for our students. They have been our focus, they will continue to be our focus, and even though y'all aren't up here anymore, I can smell the smoke already. You guys are already getting ready to light some fires, and I will appreciate what you guys have done. So onward with the apples. So I just want to make sure, are we gonna, I want to give your apples, but I want you guys to come down in front, and I want you to get that beautiful picture, and I need you to be on our front page. So I will hand them to you, then we will go down and take pictures, and we'll be good.
Yes, 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 yes. We're in the front of the podium. What do they look like? What do they look like? I'm trying to, I'm trying to see it.
Oh, they are green.
Oh, they are green, but they're clear. They should do red for a second, right? Yeah, right, you turn to the front, right, turn to the front, front and center.
Onward and upward, we are moving on to item 9.2, which is Resolution 3460, and this is, Ms. Pritchett, you have this one? Yes, all yours.
Thank you, the work is never done. Thank you, Mr. Enrique Flores, for joining us tonight. All right, every year I have the pleasure of introducing Resolution in recognition of Veterans Day. As many of you know, I am a wife and a daughter of a veteran, and I know what you have endured for your family, so thank you for your service. With that, the importance, the important purpose of Veterans Day is a celebration to honor Americans, veterans, and their patriotism, love of our country, and the willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. The Veterans in Sacramento City Unified School District serve as parents, educators, support staff, administrators, and in other capacities. The district recognized Veterans Day and honored the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, who bravely and tirelessly defend and secure our freedom here and around the world. So with that, Resolution Number 3460, my last resolution? Recognition of Veterans Day, whereas the United States of America was founded on the principles of liberty and opportunity and justice for all, and whereas America has called on men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to advance our national interests, and to preserve our rights and freedoms, and whereas on Veterans Day, we recognize the men and women of the armed forces, past and present, and we have violently defended our, these values throughout the nation's history, and whereas, serving as educators, support staff, administrators, parents, and other important capacities, these patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serve as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. And whereas on Veterans Day, we also remember and pay tribute to the millions of patriots who courage and sacrifice have defended and secured our freedom around the globe, and whereas we honor all men and women currently serving in the military for their sacrifices. Now therefore be it resolved, the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education recognizes Veterans Day on the 11th day of November, and calls for educators, students, parents, and community partners to honor it, and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district. With that, is there any public comment with Ms., Madam President?
No public comment.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I would like to, Mr. Enrique, would you like to say something?
Um, yeah.
Mr. Enrique, I'm sorry, I'm calling you by your first name, but that's okay. I mean, we've known each other for a really long time.
Very true. I simply want to say thank you for the thank you to our veterans who have done so much for our country, but I also want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve SAC City Unified School District. I feel like I've had the honor of serving my country, and I have the honor of serving my community. So thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Well, don't go anywhere, because we're gonna come down, Mr. Flores. Don't go anywhere, we're gonna come down in just a moment. You're not off the clock yet, sorry.
Okay, so just any board discussion, colleagues?
Moving on.
Can I move it?
Yeah.
I will move this.
Okay.
And student preferential vote?
Aye.
Members Singh? No, I'm sorry, Member Jean.
Aye.
Sorry. Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
So moved.
All right, with that, we do have a resolution and a certificate for you. If you'd like to stay there, we'd like to come down and take another quick picture with you, please.
I didn't know it was turning into a picture. Look, I even dressed for the occasion. I wore my Marine Corps tie.
Oh, that's so good.
All right, here we go. Hold on, let me take off my glasses. Okay, wait, let me fix my hair. All right.
All right. Moving on to item 9.3. This is to approve Resolution 3461, recognition of Native American Heritage Month, coming to the fore. We have, so Ms. Prairie Chicken.
She wasn't able to make it tonight.
And you are?
Nwakwe Gomez.
Aye. It's all yours.
Good evening, esteemed trustees of SAC City Unified and Superintendent Allen. My name is Nwakwe Gomez. I'm a senior from the Met Sacramento High School, and I am also a member of the Gashai Band of Pomo Indians of Stewarts Port Rancheria. Today, I present to you Resolution Number 3461, recognition of National Native American Heritage Month, November 2024. And I will not be reading it in its entirety, but I do want to call attention to a segment of the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sacramento City Unified School District that the district is committed to improving the academic and social emotional outcomes for Native American students and all students in this region. Throughout my high school career, I have noticed some things. There have been celebrations and community events for Latino students, Black American students, and Asian American students, and the only thing I can recall for Native American students is a land acknowledgement that was done at the beginning of this school year. I believe these kind of events and, and community events are incredibly important to call attention to the beautiful cultures and histories of these people, but also to put attention on the real issues that they continue to face today. Some might think that classroom learning is sufficient to learn about different cultures, but I believe that this kind of learning needs to extend beyond the classrooms. It's one thing to educate ourselves on a culture, but it's an even greater educational experience to hear these perspectives and to see these cultures firsthand. A lack of representation in our schools means there is a lack of conversation. We all want to be heard. As I reflect on the past, I can confidently say I have not felt this attention being given to my culture, and as my time is coming to a close at SCUSD, I want to leave an impact. For my senior thesis project, I am bringing the representation to us. I'll be hosting a celebratory event for Native American Heritage Month on November 20th at my school. I'll be joined by Viola Brooks and her dance group, Elie Azar De La Cruz and his dance group, Dr. Melissa Dr. Melissa Lial, Jackie and Ken Nash and their dance group, and Buffy Schmidt. They will showcase a small portion of their vast and rich culture. I will also be serving free Indian tacos to the public. And I strive to educate the public on the Native community and also just to have fun. As someone who is actively participating in my tribe's practices, I can advocate for them and say it is one of the most fun and accepting communities that I have ever been a part of. We want people to listen, we want to help educate, and we want to be seen. Just like me, some students don't believe there's enough representation for Native students. There are still people who believe wildly untrue stereotypes and privileges that we might possess. This is important to give students like me a chance to talk about our needs and our perspectives, to show people this important part of who we are. But the moment we stop talking about it is when that culture is lost and forgotten. Once we start to understand each other, we grow as a community. Knowledge brings us together, so let's continue to educate one another. I don't want this to be a success, just a successful event. I am providing the building blocks for the future. I hope that this event will be a catalyst for more events to come, starting with my school. If the goal is to improve academic and social emotional outcomes for the students, then we can start by giving them the spotlight. I'm inviting you all to attend my event. I will be sending out an email with a flyer either later today or tomorrow, and I hope to see you guys there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do you have a public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Um, any of my colleagues? Ms. Jean?
I really appreciate your focus. The words that you said just really grabbed my heart, so I just want to say thank you for that. And I'm really hoping I can attend. It looks like my evening's free. What's the time of your event on?
Six o'clock to 8:30.
Perfect, I can actually make that. So I'm looking forward to your invite and seeing more there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rhodes?
Oh no, I just want to say that, um, looking forward to attending the event, and please let me know if you need any extra support for that event as well. Have whoever works for you send them our way so that we can make that happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Chu Griffith?
Cool. Um, I could be wrong, but you also did help to write the resolution too, correct? Or?
Um, no.
Oh, nevermind. I was given false information. But either way, I just want to say thanks and thank you for all you're doing to really bring this month into like fruition and actually create events surrounding it, so that this resolution isn't something we're just signing off on and kind of saying, yes, we acknowledge this is happening. We're actually like bringing strides to the community, and I'm really glad that students are the ones helping to do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Singh?
Uh, I want to second that. I think it's really important that our, our resolutions have, I think we've said in the past, have teeth to them. Our resolutions have meaning and power. And the fact that you're holding an event, that is amazing. I think even in general, we've talked about, given all the history, the fact that you're here, the fact that your community's here, is, is truly all the power in the world, that through all the resilience, through all the, um, I'd say hardships, the community's here and it's our job to continue to support the community in meaningful ways, in ways that you tell us is what you're looking for. So I appreciate you finding the courage to come up here and talk to us and tell us what you believe is missing, and it's our job to listen. So just thank you for, for speaking today.
And thanks for coming to our business meeting. Because in reality, business again is what takes place here, but being invited to come out with our students and experience where you are. We're supposed to meet you where you are. And, you know, I know I've said this a number of times, I still am not the, the biggest fan of students coming to perform here. I want you in your element. I meant want you where you need to be, as opposed to coming here to give us something, because we need to get something from you. So I, I truly appreciate this. Um, I can't wait to hear the next resolution you're gonna be on, because the fire from our young people is absolutely beyond it for me. So, um, I would like to call for a motion. I heard a first and a second, I heard them, right?
I'll second it.
Okay. And, uh, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Fantastic. Did we have, uh, any?
We, we have, uh.
We're gonna go down and take some pictures?
So, we actually have the resolution for you, the parent committee, also, we have a plaque to also give you guys today, so we'll come down.
Thank you.
I have a window. No, I'm good, I got a window, I'm good. Moving on, we're on Agenda Item 9.4, approved Resolution 3462, recognition of the 1984 Sikh genocide. Mr. Singh?
Alright, um, so before I speak to this resolution, can I invite, uh, folks from the Sikh Collegiate Federation? Oh, right there, perfect. Uh, we have Simran, Gar Nan Kigar, and Sir Meeth Singh. I'm gonna hope you all can speak when I'm, when I'm done presenting this, and then we'd love to hear from you all. So I'm not going to read the, the resolution, I'm just gonna speak to the resolution itself and kind of what it means to us. And all of you have copies, um, the board has copies. So I'll start by saying it's a great honor to be in a, in a, be in a position to be able to bring something like this forward, recognizing 1984 Sikh genocide in India. So, um, on November 1st, 40 years ago, we marked the beginning of this genocide, which in initial five days, 30,006 were killed, empowered and armed by politicians, while police officers either joined or stood by. Voter lists were handed out. And you think about the democracy that we live in, and just the idea that someone can take a voter list, figure out what you believe in, what your faith is, what your community is, and target you simply because of the faith that you're born into. Uh, last month, the Sikh community organized by Jagahara Movement, the largest Sikh youth organization in the United States, embarked on a 350 mile march, um, uh, from Bakersfield to Sacramento, to the same path that our labor unions and workers have taken and embarked on, when we think about Dolores Huerta and Cesar Chavez, walking up and down the 99, recognizing that the 99 is home to so many immigrant communities, home to so many folks who are trying to find a way to build a better life in this country and in this state. The community walked nearly 15 miles a day, stopped at Gurwada, Sikh places of worship, along the 99 where they provided free food, free boarding and support, because that's what we do. Any Sikh place of worship, especially back home in Punjab where we come from, you can get free food 24 hours a day, you can get free boarding 24 hours a day. And it's truly a missed opportunity. We're such a minority in this country and even around the world, that oftentimes our kindness, no matter how much we provide, has been met with, uh, with acts of aggression and violence against our community when it has served the other side value in political wins and gains. So, uh, this march concluded this past Friday at the steps of the state capitol. All of you here were invited, and I want to thank Taylor and, and Chinua for attending. And Chinua, thank you for your words to the Sikh community, especially so many of our children, our Sikh youth, live in your area, in your district area. And passing a resolution across the United States and across the world was an ask of the organizers. It was an ask of the thousands of folks who were in attendance on Friday. And the community sees you and thanks you. So, um, I'm thankful to be a part of a board like this that's willing to acknowledge things that aren't always easy to acknowledge and have the courage to talk about things that many municipalities and places do not oftentimes do. Those who survived, those who fled that violence, fled to places like Sacramento. All of you may know that Sacramento is home to one of the largest Sikh communities in the United States, and we have children in our district who are descendants of those survivors. We've all heard the quote, that those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. That is why this recognition is so meaningful. Given the current state of our country, given the current state of children being mercilessly murdered by adults for nearly a year in Gaza, I realize that we are more often than not learning from history. We are more often than not continuing to do the things that we've seen in history, because we have seen the power and the egos and the value of gain that's political and communal in nature, because our folks, not our folks, but many folks benefit from war. They benefit from hatred, and we need to find a way to fix that. So tonight, I want to honor Jagahara Movement for the work that they've done to organize, empower, and engage our people, so that we are never victims, never again. We have members of the Sikh Collegiate Federation here, so I would just ask that they come up and perhaps speak about their experience at the march and provide any other words to us. Thank you.
Vajagikakalsa, vajagikifate. Good evening, everyone. I'm here as a Sikh student and a part of the Sikh Collegiate Federation at UC Davis, and I'm very grateful to see this resolution being passed in this Sacramento Unified School District. It means a lot for us that the next generation will get to learn about our community and our history and the legacy left by our older generations in our local schools. It is especially meaningful as this year is also the 40th anniversary of the 1984 genocide that happened in India. And the, to this day, there's active efforts by the Indian government to repress Sikh voices both in India and outside of India. However, there's also progress being made. As, as you mentioned here, there's a 1984 march that Jakara held from Bakersfield to Sacramento, where over 1,000 people joined us at the capitol to talk about the legacy that our like ancestors left behind and talk about how to carry that forward in the new generation. And in collaboration with local politicians and other communities. I think this resolution is a guarantee that these type of conversations will continue to happen and continue to happen for the years to come in our local schools. And we would just like to thank everyone involved in making this possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Colleagues, any board discussion? No, okay. Ms. Jean?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this to us again. Just Jean.
Thanks. Um, okay, then, um, Mr. Singh, if you'd like to. Uh, let's, okay. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
We're not, yes, it's picture day here at Sac City. So, gonna come down and hand a plaque to Jagahara Movement and also the, the resolution itself.
One more picture, this is my last one.
Picture day. Picture day.
Always fun. You guys can do that, yeah, yeah. Okay, 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 okay. I was like, I'm really in the middle.
Do you want to hold it?
No, 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 go for it.
Okay. He got yours too.
Crazy.
Alrighty, item 9.5, Student Support and Health Services Annual Report.
Good morning, Board President Philip, oh, good morning. I'm already ready, moving on to Friday.
Yes, good night.
Good evening. President Phillips, Superintendent Allen, and members of the board. I'm Jaclyn Garner, and I serve as your Executive Director of Student Support and Health Services. And I'm honored to be, have here alongside me our Director of Health Services, Noel Estacio. Together, we will be sharing our 2324 Annual Update, our annual report from the Student Support and Health Services Department. Where do I point this? Is there a secret place to point to get this to turn anyone? Do we get time back on the clock? I know, do we get time back on our clock? Really? We timed this down to the second. Well, I think it's the clicker, or? It says on. Okay, did I do that? Alright, it's clicking, thank you. I don't know if you guys did, but you did it. Oh, oh, no, no, look, I'm doing it, yeah, yeah. Alright, you already know who we are. So what we plan to share with you in the time with our, our presentation is a brief overview of who we are in Student Support and Health Services, what we do and how we do it by sharing highlights from the 20, uh, 2423, my goodness. Whoo, 2324 Annual Report, as well as what we're doing in this school year. As you, as everyone's very familiar with this slide, just really lifting up our district core values and our guiding principles, that this is a very important call to action in our department. In alignment with that, we wanted to share our department vision that very much aligns and also calls out that we are focused on providing care that ensures families have equitable access to systems of support. In addition, we wanted to, um, show you again, our department, what you see here is our staffing, and our department is comprised of three divisions, our Foster Youth Services, our Health Services, and our Student Support and Health Services. Together, we have 170 staff members who are serving in various programs and supports. And this slide gives you an overview of all of those, um, um, programs that we are leading through our department. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Noel Estacio, so she can share more about the annual report.
Thank you, Jaclyn. So I have the honor of presenting a brief summary of our 2324 Annual Report that we titled More Than a Student. The National Center for Education Statistics continues to report a significant decline in K-12 students' mental health post-pandemic. Last year, we reached a record high of student interventions, serving 96% of our district's learners, but especially in the area of mental health supports. Our staff provided 565 suicide risk assessments. We had a 53% increase in conflict resolutions and peer mediation. We provided over 2,000 caregiver supports, and we have the highest number of students needing 504 accommodations.
In addition to coordinating with local law enforcement and hospital systems, the site-based Student Support Health Services team quickly connected with the District 504 Coordinator to develop an emergency plan that provided daily one-to-one supervision, and emergency supervision, sorry, ensuring Beatrice's ongoing safety and access to her education. As the 504 plan was implemented, the severity of Beatrice's mental health continued to escalate. The Student Support Health Services team engaged with our Special Education Department in pursuit of further assessment, and ultimately, a safer, more appropriate placement was recommended for Beatrice. Thank you for letting me share Beatrice's story.
As you listen to Beatrice's story, I hope you could hear the many layers of support, of integrated support that were provided by our Student Support and Health Services Department, as well as our other department partner staff. And as you can see from the data that Noel shared, Beatrice is one of the many of our students who receive this compassionate, high-quality services. In addition, we wanted to share that an important part of this work is our partnerships with our higher ed institutions that help to create our future workforce. So last year alone, we partnered with 13 academic institutions to place 98 interns from three different disciplines of nursing, social work, and clinical psychology, who served across our district and provided over 28,000 of direct service, of hours of direct service to our students. All of these interns are supervised by our school nurses and our school social workers who provide training and supervision and are helping to create our future workforce. In addition of sharing all the work that, in our annual report that we did last year, we really wanted to show and highlight the work that is already happening right now as we are through the first quarter of this school year. So these are just a snapshot of some of the services and interventions that have already been provided by our team. I really wanted to lift up and call out how you can see 944 students alone this year have received vaccines at our Cerna-based immunization clinic. These are students who are able to stay in school and not miss due to having delayed vaccines. And so we're really providing that access to their education. In addition, you see the 1,600 students received healthcare supports from our school nurses in the form of reviewing and implementing emergency care plans that is helping our students who come to school with health conditions be able to stay in class and learn. Lastly, I really just want to lift up where you see 148 suicide risk assessments have already occurred alone this school year. To really just highlight what Noel had shared, that we continue to see our students are really struggling with mental health issues. And also to really highlight that our students, with having our support staff on campuses, are able to get high-quality care to help intervene in these crisis moments. So in addition, the other work that we're focused on this school year is helping to move along these other programs and initiatives while we're working with our district leadership, community partners, and grant-funding organizations to sustain the 44% of our staff that are funded by one-time funds that will be expiring at the end of this school year. And as we wait, as we wrap up, sorry, I just have a closing statement, if we can do that, and then a small video. But I do want to end our presentation by giving my deep gratitude to our Student Support and Health Services team, some of who may time to come here tonight or are sitting out in the audience. And also to our families and our students who trust us to share their stories and experiences to allow us to walk alongside them and help them through the challenges that they're experiencing. And lastly, just to express our gratitude for our partnerships with our departments, our other departments here in the district, and other leadership, and our community partners. Because it is through that collective, integrated work that we are really being able to create safe, inclusive, and welcoming spaces for our youth and be able to support our students and families. So with that, we have a short video, 50 seconds, to just put into words about the integration and collaboration of our team with our students, staff, and families.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. And for colleagues, Ms. Jean?
Thinking about all of the CASP data we had to look at last week, I'm very excited to see some data about the whole humans that we're working with, right? I do have three questions for you, though. One of the thoughts I had is, as a teacher on a campus, when I see students, knowing how to get them to the resources they need can be tricky. And you mentioned the site-based student health support services teams on school sites. I'd love to hear a little bit more about those teams. What do they look like? How do they work?
Yes. So they can, they're a composition of, we have school nurses, school social workers. Some schools have student support centers, and some schools have youth mental health advocates, in addition to the interns that were talked about as well.
That was actually my next question. Thank you. So on one hand, I really appreciate the creativity in bringing in interns and encouraging them to look at education as part of the field and all of those pieces. On the other hand, it is like 18 positions that I'm sure are difficult to fill anyway. But I'm a firm believer that employees in the district are going to be more invested in the work they're doing than just as we're training and supporting interns. So whose labor would this be if we didn't have the interns? And how do we start encouraging it to be something we're bringing in-house?
I mean, they are like, they're in training to be school nurses or school social workers. So it could be that, but they're not at that level that where they can, because they're earning their masters. So part of getting their masters is to complete this on-the-job training as part of their internship, which is why they are supervised by school nurses and school social workers, because it's part of how we train the pipeline of workforce.
Excellent.
So they technically can't take away a school social worker or school nurse's job because they can't have it yet. Because they don't have their, either their credential or their master's level degree.
They're working with it. And I'm assuming we've worked closely with our nurses and our, you said psychiatrists or sociologists? Sorry.
I think it's a PsyD program, so different, like, yeah.
Okay, so any of those. And so we've worked with all of our folks in-house to make sure they're feeling comfortable and competent in supporting these interns and able to do it well?
Yeah.
Because that's a whole nother layer to the job, right?
Yeah. I mean, I believe many of them enjoy actually being field instructors and task supervisors. You know, it's really helping develop our future workforce. I know in our social workers alone, that over 50% of the actual social workers we have staffed now were our interns that served in our district.
That is an excellent data point. I love that. And then my last one was the Moving Forward Future Work. I know between Esr funds and ELOP funds and different COVID realities, that we're coming up on those funds all expiring. And I just saw there's 44% of staff that's expiring at the end of this school year. When you say working to sustain, what are some of the things you are doing on that? Because I bet that conversation's coming back to the board. So what do, what do we need to know right now and be thinking about?
I think what we're doing to sustain is trying to have conversations and see what is a viable way of funding. That's about where we're at.
Yeah. And it's going to be tough, because when those monies are gone, those monies are gone, but the needs didn't go away. So what do we do with it? So something I, I'm glad we're talking, starting to think about it now, because it's hard when it hits you right in the middle of budget development, so.
Yeah. Thank you for those questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Pritchett?
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. I love that you guys called it "More Than a Student," and it's opening up the packet that you guys gave us tonight, and seeing the students' stories like right up front, like, kind of hit me, right? Because that's not our normal presentation, that usually we see, you know, some graphs and some numbers, and then there's talk about what we're doing, right? So thank you for giving us that visual, because I think that really just shows a whole picture, right? So you guys are doing great work. And I appreciate the, I appreciate the question that you asked about how do you sustain, right? And I think that, looking at this graph of like moving forward, you know, I wrote, like, how do we move forward, right? With those expiring funds? And, I mean, just talking about the basic mental health needs of our students, especially after COVID, we're still, we're still seeing the effects of it, right? And so I just want to say to you, don't be afraid to come to this board and tell them what you need. Because even with those expiring funds, we have to know, this board has to know, what it's going to take to be able to sustain, or hopefully even grow, because we're going to see that the more you get into it, the more needs our students have, right? That we're not catching right now. So please just don't be afraid to come to this board and tell us, this is what we need from you to be able to sustain and grow. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Mr. Singh?
Goes quick. I understand this is an annual report, but my question is more related to the last 48 hours. So I really want to know, to some level, and a lot of our students have expressed concerns around the state of our country, which I've mentioned earlier. And I understand that there have been some conversations in terms of support services. So are you able to talk about that a little bit? I know kids are stressed, distressed, worried. What have we been doing to provide children with the reassurance of what the district is, what we stand for, what programs we have, and basically, to some level, it's going to be okay?
Is your question about what's being done in the last eight hours?
Well, that's why I said it's an annual report. So I'm asking about what's, what have we done? I know that your staff has already engaged. I have an understanding that some folks have engaged. So can we learn more about what that engagement has looked like? What are the, what have you all been doing when those kids are coming to you with those questions?
About feeling uncertain, like post-election, or, yeah. So we continue to, you know, help reassure them, help them explore their feelings, and, you know, there's just, and to make sure our staff are available. So that's what we continue to do, which is what we do in any time there's any traumatic event or things that can cause feelings of uncertainty. So, yeah. Did you want a more specific, are you looking for something? Okay.
Come up, bro.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Sheridan O'Neill. I'm one of the social workers, actual coordinator at Rosa Parks K-8. Thank you for this brief time. I just wanted to elaborate on that. So we do have crisis protocols that, you know, when there is a big event, so, in like a neighborhood, you know, kid died, as you guys know on the news, so that would be a crisis response. So we do have kind of a protocol in that regard, given the election results and like what you talked about, that also might be a kind of similar thing as needed, but we really start at the site level. So that would be us opening up that space, being visible on campus. Thankfully, our student support center and social workers were really engaged with the students and the teachers and admin. So a lot of the kids already know us, and they are able, like Jaclyn said, to come directly to us and check in. But that does look like doing groups, pulling kids out of class, offering like art therapy and just things like that. So we really want to just make sure we're visible for our students. And it's, I would say today at the school site, there was a lot of anxiety and yesterday as well, but we're getting through it. So, yeah. But thank you for asking that. It's definitely hard on our entire district and us as workers, but we show up every day ready to do the work and help our kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheridan.
Thanks.
Sheridan said it perfectly, so, yeah. Good. It's a wrap.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to count to three and see if any of my other colleagues have anything else they'd like to share. Seeing that that is not the case, then, this is an information item. I appreciate the report and all the work that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. And... Item 10.0, Communications. First up, Student Member Report. Ms. Chiu Griffith?
It's been a very crazy week, but, so, I'm going to try to stay as civil and composed as I can while talking about this, but I just really want to share out what I've seen on my campus and how I think students have been feeling the last 48-ish hours. It's been a pretty, like, high tension two days. It's a really uncertain and crazy time for a lot of students. About 48 hours ago, I got on a call with a few dozen of my friends from school, and we watched the news together. The next day, we kind of came in, and it was a very solemn environment. I spoke to a lot of students, many of which are first, second-generation immigrants, many of which have non-citizen family members, many of which are queer or trans. And almost all the students I talked to, they, I mean, there was a big range of emotion, but I think the words I heard the most were "I'm scared." I just want to really uplift that a lot of students right now are terrified, not just for themselves, but for their friends, their family, and their peers over state lines. We have a certain amount of protections and liberties, I guess, in California and in SUSD, but I think most students can acknowledge that this isn't true for everyone our age. I've seen people in my classes spamming "Refresh" on Google, trying to see the results for the House. I've seen all over social media, students posting their thoughts, their fears, their concerns. I've heard poetry written by students about the election. And I've seen kids crying in the classrooms, their faces in their hands, just completely I just want to state how important it is right now to, as a school board, protect our students, and not just fight for our students, but really fight alongside them right now.
So we do have crisis protocols that, you know, when there is a big event, so, in like a neighborhood, you know, a kid died, as you guys know on the news, so that would be a crisis response. So we do have kind of a protocol in that regard, given the election results and like what you talked about, that also might be a kind of similar thing as needed, but we really start at the site level. So that would be us opening up that space, being visible on campus. Thankfully, our student support center and social workers were really engaged with the students and the teachers and admin, so a lot of the kids already know us, and they are able, like Jacqueline said, to come directly to us and check in. But that does look like doing groups, pulling kids out of class, offering like art therapy and just things like that. So we really want to just make sure we're visible for our students, and it's, I would say, today at the school site, there was a lot of anxiety, and yesterday as well, but we're getting through it, so, yeah. But thank you for asking that. It's definitely hard on our entire district and us as workers, but we show up every day ready to do the work and help our kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheridan. Thanks. Sheridan said it perfectly, so, yeah. Good. It's a wrap. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to count to three and see if any of my other colleagues have anything else they'd like to share. Seeing that that is not the case, then, this is an information item. I appreciate the report and all the work that you guys do. Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right. Item 10.0, communications. First up, student member report. Ms. Chu Griffith?
It's been a very crazy week, but, so, I'm going to try to stay as civil and composed as I can while talking about this, but I just really want to share out what I've seen on my campus and how I think students have been feeling the last 48-ish hours. It's been a pretty, like, high tension two days. It's a really uncertain and crazy time for a lot of students. About 48 hours ago, I got on a call with a few dozen of my friends from school, and we watched the news together. The next day, we kind of came in, and it was a very solemn environment. I spoke to a lot of students, many of which are first, second-generation immigrants, many of which have non-citizen family members, many of which are queer or trans. And almost all the students I talked to, they, I mean, there was a big range of emotion, but I think the words I heard the most were "I'm scared." I just want to really uplift that a lot of students right now are terrified, not just for themselves, but for their friends, their family, and their peers over state lines. We have a certain amount of protections and liberties, I guess, in California and in SUSD, but I think most students can acknowledge that this isn't true for everyone our age. I've seen people in my classes spamming "refresh" on Google, trying to see the results for the House. I've seen all over social media, students posting their thoughts, their fears, their concerns. I've heard poetry written by students about the election, and I've seen kids crying in the classrooms, their faces in their hands, just completely defeated. I just want to state how important it is right now to, as a school board, protect our students, and not just fight for our students, but really fight alongside them right now.
Thank you. Next up, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Pritchett Phillips. Sorry.
It's okay.
That, I just want to thank you for your words and your, the strength you have to share your thoughts and what you've seen, and being vulnerable enough to speak your truth, and it impacted me, and so, thank you. I'm going to be very brief this evening, but I do want to give a huge and heartfelt thank you to the voters of Sacramento for their support for our latest school bond efforts. We know the votes are still being counted, but based on the returns to this point, I'm very optimistic that Measure D will pass overwhelmingly, which is fantastic news for our district. Additionally, I want to thank the volunteers who raised money, ran texting banks, discovered, delivered yard signs, knocked on doors, spread the word about Measure D, and encouraged voters to support it. This bond money is going to allow our incredible facilities team to continue to do the equity-based construction and improvement work that is uplifting entire neighborhoods across this city. It's going to take some time, but we will give our students the schools, classrooms, playgrounds, and athletic facilities they deserve. And Mr. Ralston, I want to give a special shout-out to you for the work that you've done on this, as well as, I don't see or hear Mr. Nathaniel Browning, so he must not be in this room. But, huh? Okay. But I want to give you a special shout-out for the work that you've done for this, so just thank you, everyone.
President's report, I got nothing. Mr. Rhodes?
I'll be very brief. I just want, as we, as we come out for this elect cycle, just the good news that the superintendent spoke about, and just want to give a shout-out to staff. Chris, man, we've lifted monumental effort. You led that, and it was beautiful how our community broadly shows that support of our schools is something that is unequivocally accepted and backed here in Sacramento, the city of Sacramento. And, you know, when I first came, I was like, I hope that it's not tight, but seeing how, how much support we've gotten from East Sacramento to South Sacramento, to Central City, all over, people have said, yes, we want to continue the work that SacCity is doing, and it shows that we continue to move forward, and I'm very proud of the effort that was put together by all of the partners to make this happen for our students. And, party to celebrate soon for everyone. So everyone, to our community, we want you guys to come and celebrate with us when we throw a Measure D-winning party, so you guys can come out and celebrate with us. Thank you guys so much, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Singh.
I think along those same lines, just really thankful to the community. I think it speaks volumes of the level of work that staff has done, that we've all been able to accomplish as a board, and that the community sees it, and there's a palpable difference and feeling on where we're headed, and that's what that, that measure means. And it's a great feeling to go to the website, click the map, and the whole map is the exact same color, because there's no part of the city that has gone against us when it comes to Measure D. There is no neighborhood or part of Sacramento, so from North Natomas all the way down to the very edge of our city, all the way to the east, it's all lit up, it's all lit up for Measure D. It's really beautiful to see, and I think folks are excited. And I also want to, on another note, and I think I've mentioned it, it's been an evening of mentioning some, some difficult truths, I want to acknowledge our student member for having such bravery to speak on something that, you know, I think about this, if you woke up two days ago and you thought that you can go throughout your day like it's any other day, then you don't know what this feels like. If you woke up and you're like, it's just another day, then you are not, you don't, you're not feeling the effects because you have either not lived it, your community has not lived it, and if this is not affecting you and it's benefiting you, then you should really think about what type of ally you're going to be able to be to our students and our children and our kids as we move forward. As it was mentioned, we're lucky we live here, we're lucky we live in California and Sacramento and this school district. I know there's many difficult conversations that happen to other school districts, but when I look at this entire group, we have never disagreed on protecting our kids, we have never disagreed on protecting our communities, and I don't think we will ever be in a position like that, because I think we live in a place where people care about our schools, they care about our children, and we're going to make sure that we continue to fight for them and protect them. So it doesn't have to be on this dais. We don't need whoever wants to come up and tell us what they're looking for, what type of protections they're looking for. This may not be the best place. You send us an email, you talk to your site-level folks, you talk to the folks at our Student Support Services, they will get the information to us, we will know what our kids are looking for. In the next couple of months, we will actually figure out what type of systems of support we may need to work on in order to truly protect our kids, because we don't know the full truth yet. We will know in a couple of months what type of defensive mechanisms we may need to put in place to really keep our kids safe. So I look forward to working with everyone, and especially all of staff, and I want our kids to know that we are here for you, I want our families to know that we're here for you, and we're in this together, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, item 11. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Thanks. I am going to call for a motion to approve all items on consent. All right. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Members Jean?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Yay. All righty. Somehow I feel like there should be something else, but there is not. So, moving on, item 12.0, business and financial information reports received. Item 13.0, future board meetings, dates, locations, slowly. November 21, 2024, 5:00 PM, closed session, 6:00 PM, open session, CERNA Center, 5735 47th Avenue, Community Room. December 19, 2024, 5:00 PM, closed session, 6:00 PM, open sessions, CERNA Center, 5735 47th Avenue, Community Room. Item 14.0, a G.S. All in favor?
Yes.
Have a nice evening. All right.